All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 13, 2019. Before we get started, I would ask if we all stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to our start for Schedule 6 PM, what I'd like to do is, I would ask if we have a moment of silence. This past week, we lost a beloved member of the community, Mr. Ron Hall. Ron served on countless committees and boards in Tewksbury and volunteered. And again, we lost Mr. Ron Hall last week, so my condolences to his family. You can pay respects to Mr. Ron Hall from 1:00 to 3:00 on Sunday at the Tewksbury Funeral Home. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, please. With that said, why don't we jump in? So our first scheduled item is 6 PM, Application for Autism Awareness Summer Fest. And I would just ask, just name, just name for the record, and then we can kind of jump in as to the ask.
Sure.
Tyler Murray.
Eric Murray.
All right, want to just jump in? Is the kind of, what does he ask of the town, of the board? So what we'll do is kind of explain the ask, and then we'll just socialize with the board, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. So we've been working with the town manager and getting all the permits and process for our event, September 7, down at Mark's property out back at the Tewksbury Country Club. So I think we have everything in order that we need. We have site plans here. If you, we emailed them, I'm not sure if you need that. You have a blown-up one if you'd like to see it.
Does any of the board members need the site plan? I know we emailed a copy, we're good?
We were.
If you have a printed copy, I'll take one. Yeah, that'd be great, I'd love to, but I did not print it out.
Such high maintenance, Jane.
You have no idea. Thank you.
Okay, I know you provide just a high level for the residents as far as location, concept, and kind of the ask, what applications you're looking for, for approvals?
We're looking for today, a one-day liquor permit and an entertainment license, I believe. Yeah, one-day malt and wine liquor, one-day all alcohol, and one-day entertainment license.
Correct, all three. Okay, very good. Okay, anything else to add as far as the event? Residents are watching.
So just to give you a rundown, this is our second annual. We had it at my house last year, and it's just grown too big for this year. Donnie Wahlberg and I came up with this idea last year, and for his wife Jenny McCarthy's charity, Generation Rescue for Autism. Autism affects 1 in 43 kids these days, and we're just trying to get some money headed that way to try to find why, you know, what causes it, what can they do to help. We donate to the Malmark School, and we also donate to Tewksbury Charity, into Action Recovery for the opiate addiction crisis that's going on right now.
Okay.
And so we have bands, we have live music, we have food trucks there, the Wahlburgers trucks come. We have, this year, we have John Caffey and Beaver Brown Band playing, The Stompers, and Eric Van Hooten. And hopefully, Brian Dick is gonna get up and sing a couple tunes with The Stompers.
I didn't know he made the bill.
Yeah, right, yeah. And, you know, it's just a great, great time. Last year went off without a hitch. We have fireworks this year at the end of the show. We're gonna end it, it's gonna go from 3 to 9:30. And it's just a good family atmosphere. Everybody comes out, meets a bunch of celebrities. We're partners with the Boston Bruins Foundation this year, so a bunch of my friends from the Bruins came last year. But this year, we're gonna have pretty much the whole team, because we're partners with the Boston Bruins Foundation. And some of my other celebrity friends will be there as well, and Donnie and Jenny, obviously. And it's just good for the community. People get out and get to interact with people they normally wouldn't get to interact with. Like, no one wants to meet Brian, but if he pays to get in...
I was gonna say, if he sings, it could detract, you know, folks. We gotta be careful there.
Exactly.
That's a definite.
So, no, you know, all kidding aside, it's just great for the, great for the community. It's great, people come out, they have a good time. And we highlight, we do three feel-good stories about people that have overcome adversity in their life. So last year, we did three really good stories on kids. One that lives here in town, Sutherland Nancy's, yes, right. She's never spoken a word in her life, she's captain of the field hockey team. So we did a big video piece on her, and then I had one of the celebrities bring her up on stage and place, you know. It's just, it's a fun day, and last year, we raised $63,000 to give away. And this year, we wanna at least double that. That's our, that's where we're having this. Mark's been great, helping us out with the, with the location. And, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's, we have Cisco Brewery, I'm not sure if you're from Nantucket, they're our sponsor, they're gonna bring this big balloon, pop-up saloon thing in, we're just gonna have a lot of fun and raise a lot of money.
Okay, excellent. At this point, I'll open up the board for questions, concerns.
I just have one question. How do people get tickets for your event?
So you go to AutismSummerFest.org.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you get tickets right there. And if you're as rich as Brian, you can buy a couple, and even if you're just gonna go by yourself, you can buy 10, 20 tickets.
Right.
And just put it on your Dick insurance card.
Well, Mr. Brian Dick is getting picked on, in a good way. Mr. Kratman.
The way that they're gonna be selling the alcohol down there, are they gonna have like a, are they gonna have like something bringing it in, or is it gonna be set up with tables, or is it gonna be like a vendor coming in?
Yeah, we're gonna have a beer garden, and we hired an outside firm to come in and pour and ID everybody, and make sure when you come in, you're getting an ID bring. And I think everybody here is well aware of Mark and his, and how he operates, and there's gonna be no, you know, nonsense. And that's the first thing he said to me when I came to him and asked him if we could use a spot. And, you know, he's a dear friend of mine, and I, utmost importance is safety. We've talked to the police department, we're gonna have six details there, we're gonna have a couple firemen, on top of our own private security. We have a big, big security team. When you have this many people in one place, it's better to have more and not need them than need them and not have enough. So, yeah, it's, so the liquor is gonna be contained into the beer garden, and there's only gonna be beer and wine out there. And then in the VIP tent, where Brian's not gonna be, there's gonna be, you know, some bucks and stuff like that.
That's the only, I mean, this is outside containing, making sure that, you know, nobody gets near it, that's, you know, under the age, that's my number-one concern, but Mark's involved, I'm not really that concerned, honestly. I'm sure you'll run it properly, just wanna make sure that we have safeguards of that. This is gonna draw crowds, I just wanna make sure no kids are slipping in there.
We don't want the Irish festival, right?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. How about, Mr. Brian Dick? I know you're getting picked on.
No, I think, as Mr. Murray, it sounds like a great event, great to include the town of Tewksbury in something like this, brings a lot of people into town, right? Very successful last year, and it's just bigger, it's growing, so, what a great cause. I appreciate that. So, just two questions, I guess, in the packet we had, there was some information that was missing on certificates and things like that, but that's been provided and updated. This is probably a question for Mr. Montori.
You know, when you make your final vote tonight, I would just make it subject to all the proper paperwork and documentation required, such as insurance certificates and tip certified, certification information as provided.
Yep. So I know that all the i's have been dotted, t's have been crossed. Just, I guess, on location, like, how, where's the stage, I guess?
So everything's on Mark's land. If you know where his helipad and toy cars are, in that big barn, it's all right there, his golf practice area. So there's a white fence, if you can see down there. Everything's gonna be on his side of the white fence, you know. You got a thingy here.
Yeah, I have a...
Oh, you got it, okay, yeah. So everything's gonna be there, and we have it all contained, so it's, that it's very containable for the security. Food trucks, beer garden, the stage, the VIP area, and it's, nothing's on town land except for people walking into there.
Right.
And the parking, obviously.
Yeah. All right, so the parking would be used...
Parking and living space, field. Pat from the gym offered us up his parking lot, and, you know, if there's overflow, we'll just...
Yeah. So that's all the questions I have. I know Mr. Murray does a lot for the town, and very involved in the town. He has a business in town, all those good things. I've grown up in town, so I know you, and I believe this is a great event, and...
Thank you.
I offer my support in that.
Very good. Ms. Jane Miller.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's, to echo my colleagues here, I think it's a very good event for the community. I know it was successful last year. My only question was about traffic, and roughly how many tickets you were hoping to sell, what kind of what you anticipate?
Yeah, we're hoping to sell around 2,000 tickets. You know, last year, we had about 600, but it was 4th of July weekend, so it was a tough weekend. This weekend's a better weekend, it's the weekend after Labor Day. We're partners with the Boston Bruins Foundation, so we have more media access and social media. So we talked to Lieutenant Columbus about the traffic and the details and stuff. We're gonna have our own people directing traffic, and his detail cops are gonna be there to make sure everything's going smoothly.
Okay. No, I agree, Mr. Murray is, I know him as a business owner in the community, and he's done a lot. I know you worked on the Tewksbury Habitat build in the past, so he's done a lot for our community, and he's as tremendous as a member of Board of Directors for Liam Nation. Autism is something that we pay very close attention to.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Very good. I always say I don't like to waste words, but I will waste words this time, I mean, I'm just gonna repeat what the board said. Very commendable indeed to raise that much money, all going to what a worthy cause, so I thank you, and thank Mr. Ginsburg for always being kind and generous to the town, so I thank you for that.
Always, yes, he's a great guy, and thank you very much. It's my pleasure.
Very good. With that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day malt and wine liquor license, one-day all-alcohol liquor license, and the entertainment license for the Autism Awareness Summer Fest.
Second.
Pending, pending all the necessary paperwork. And just for the residents, we do have all the necessary paperwork, but Mr. Montori, we're just missing, we're missing one or two items?
Yeah, so I'd just make it subject to the certificates of insurance being in place and tip certification.
Okay.
So it's subject to the certificate of insurance and all the permits being in the proper place and in place.
Okay, very good. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you guys very much, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hopefully you'll all come there, you know, all the board's luck, it'll be on my guest list, just come and check out the thing and have some fun.
We'll see you on September 7. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Let me know if you need anything.
Thank you. See you later.
Thank you very much, good luck. Thank you. Good luck, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, very good. This brings us to our next scheduled item for 6:10. We're a little bit past, but that's okay. This is a Class II transfer application from Alpha Motors LLC to Sina Motors, 2195 Main Street. Come on down. Just name, just name for the record?
Claudio Sina.
Very cool. So what we're gonna do is, this is a public hearing, so what we're gonna do is, you can kind of state your business.
Sure.
Well, there's some questions from the board. I'll open it up for public comment, I'll close it for public comment, and then the board will kind of deliberate. So, with that said, do I have a motion to waive the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so please, take the floor, kind of explain your ask of the town, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So my name is Claudio Sina. I currently own a car dealership in Revere, and we're planning to expand to a Tewksbury location, which is located at 2195, in which case, we would have two locations, and what we ask of the city is just to transfer of the previous holder to ourselves.
Okay. I'm gonna read, okay, we're probably gonna have some more questions, but what I'd like to do is, now, this doesn't directly apply to you, this applies to the previous business owner.
Okay.
That's Alpha Motors LLC. What I'd like to do is just read something for the record.
Sure.
I want it on the record, and then we're gonna deliberate, you know, I'm sure we'll have some questions from the board and deliberate. So here's the deal. This was July 31, 2019. All of your paperwork is true, just for the residents, all of your paperwork has checked out, but we did have some issues with the prior owner, Mr. Montori, so is that correct?
That is correct.
So what I'd like to do is just read, I'm not gonna call them violations, but the town did have concerns through the board, through the town manager, and we have a town council, that's Tewksbury's lawyer.
That's okay.
So I just want these on the record. Now, are you aware of these before I read them out? Did you?
Some of them, yes, some of them, no, but I believe the city has been pretty private as to the real things that we're going on behind, so just not, probably not 100%.
Okay, in fairness, in fairness to the requister, can what we do after this is send Claudio an email, just highlighting this, 'cause it's gonna be on the record, and we'll talk further. Again, I just want it for the residents and for the record.
That's okay.
So as far as, as far as, what I wanna do is just do a very brief summary of the five items, again, for, just for the, on the record, that's all.
Yes, sir.
So number one, if the board finds out after the hearing, the transfer is accepted, I recommend that the license provided meets the following conditions. Number one, licensee shall not park and/or store motor vehicles within 15 feet from any property line on the premises. So essentially, the cars that were advertised were a little bit too close to the surrounding...
Street.
To the street, exactly.
Okay.
And remember, we have to plow and what, so that was a concern, that was noted. Number two, licensee shall not park and/or store heavy commercial motor vehicles, towing trucks, and/or tow equipment on the, on the premise. So in a nutshell, there were trucks everywhere. So we don't know how he or she ran his business, but we can tell you that was a concern that was duly noted from the town. Number three, licensee shall not operate or permit, or to be permitted to operate a motor vehicle or general body repair, repair business on, on the premise. Provided however, licenses may appear as a necessary use to Class II motor vehicle licenses, motor vehicles, and license offered for sale. So essentially, keep me honest, Mr. Montori, you're not an auto body shop, however, you're in the business of selling used cars, not new cars, used cars, and you might have to do repairs to those new, those used cars. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I believe what he was doing was bringing heavier trucks and FedEx trucks and all sorts of things there, which were actually helped cleaning all the property and making sure everything was in compliance with the city, but it's not in our intent even going close to that sort of business.
So in Revere, well, I'll read these, and then we'll have questions from the board.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now, we're almost there, no, that's perfect. Number four, licensee shall strictly comply with the town zoning bylaws, and again, some of these infractions that were noted goes against the bylaws for this particular permit slash application. And last but not least, Mr. Raymond P. Nicholson, trustee, and of Alpha Motors LLC, shall pay the town $635 representing the amount of court cost on, before issuing the license. Now, those are the five documented infractions that we've noted to the previous business owners, which would apply to you based on, but I did have a question for Mr. Montori. Since Claudio is not the owner on record, or would be, who's subject to the town, to the payment of $365 to the town?
We would still hold Raymond Nicholson to that, and we'll make that part one of the conditions before we issue the license.
Okay.
Okay. And also, Mr. Chairman, there is, there is one other one that we should add as a condition to the license. A failure to comply with these conditions shall cause the board to revoke this license.
Okay.
Sure.
And that was last but not least, so thank you for, you know, thank you for stating that, Mr. Montori. So again, what we'll do is, we'll provide these in writing, you know, and again, we still have to deliberate, and I'm sure the board has questions, but I wanted to get that for the record, because we did have problems with the previous owner. Again, that's not a reflection to you in any way, shape, or form, but...
Sure.
Okay.
All sounds reasonable.
Okay. With that being said, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna open up the public hearing now, if there's, so at this time, I'd like to open up, any public comments? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So at this point, what I'd like to do is just open up the board for questions, comments, and concerns. So, who would like to go first? Ms. Stronach.
So first of all, I just want, for the residents, we have a list of about 60 residents who are abutted to this property, who are also notified of this, so I want, while we don't have any public participation tonight, the abutters were notified, and I want people to be aware of that. I am happy to support this license, because I am hoping that, given you the history, that this will actually be, put the town in a better position for this particular property. It's nice to see somebody come in, take a property that's existing, that's for this use, and use it for its intended purposes. So I wanna thank you for coming to Tewksbury and doing your business here, and you, as you noted from our chairman, we take our businesses very seriously, and it is a partnership, so we will be a two-way street on this. So if you do have concerns, you can bring them to us as well.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stronach. Ms. Jane Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to see you, thank you for coming. I live in, I live nearby, so I walk by this property often. Can you tell us a little bit about how long you've been in business in Revere?
Sure. So I personally have been in the car business for about eight years. My business partners, which are also here, have been in the car business for 15, 20 years.
Thank you for coming.
In Revere specifically, since we opened Sina Motors, it's been roughly around four or five years, very successful, and we've not a single problem with the city or anything of the sort, thankfully, for the last few years. And, yes.
Okay. And then, can you tell me if you have any plans at this time, and maybe you don't, to update the property that you're intending to move?
We're currently updating it, as in floors, cleaning, everything, with sort of new, partially of what was going on in terms of not being in compliance with the city, so helping the landlord and getting rid of all of the problems that the previous tenant had caused the city, and to bring the property into compliance, and also within the property, a lot of different infrastructure changes, and floors, and paintings, and just making sure that it's, it's a good business, ready to go. I'd invite some of you guys as well to come into our Revere location, you have an idea of the feel. It's a family-owned business, so it's me, sister, mom, dad, you know, you mostly see our family together there, and it's a nice place to come around, have a coffee with us sometime.
All right. Well, we have, we have a very vibrant business community in Tewksbury, and I'm excited to have another company join our, our community. I think it's fantastic to have you on Route 38, and you should maybe wanna consider some of our business organizations in town. We have a wonderful Chamber of Commerce and...
Sure.
That you might be interested in.
Why not?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brian Dick.
Nope, concerns or questions, just welcome. Thank you very much for thinking about Tewksbury. It's nice to hear about your experience, that you have a business partner, and I also own a business in Tewksbury, so welcome, and I think it's gonna be a great relationship. It's great that our chair was able to outline some of the concerns you have. I think you totally understand where we're coming from. It's good to have some new, new business come in there, so I just wanna welcome you and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Very good. How about, Mr. Mark Kratman?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So the business you own in Revere, it's right on Squire Road?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have an auto repair place around also in Revere that you use?
No.
Or is it, do you just...
We outsource, as of right now, so, yes.
Okay. I just saw there was an Alpha Auto in Revere also, I just didn't know if you were involved with that at all.
No. So Alpha technically has nothing to do with us, we're completely separate business.
Okay. Now, Selectmen Miller discussed about upgrades to the place. I understand you're doing stuff inside the building, but what about the outside? Because this is probably, I don't know how many times somebody's been in front of me in the last two years about this property, and it just seems they come in, they do stuff inside, but it's, if people wanna see a change to this business, it's letting them know that this is a new business?
Sure.
And that the old people aren't there, I strongly suggest you take a look at the property around it, the parking lots and pretty much disrepair. The signage is old, and there's been a couple of people that have gone in and tried to do something, but haven't upgraded that.
Sure.
And I think it's gonna be difficult to get people in there unless you let people know, this is a new business, we're a new entity in there, and that's what's gonna do. So is there any plans of doing any of that work?
So I think what really differentiates us from most of the people that have been there, I mean, the car business is big, but it's relatively small. Everybody knows everybody. In the end, we all sort of meet each other at the auction, and for the most part, we more or less know the previous tenants that have been. And I think what really differentiates us from them is our experience and how long we've been in business, and actually already having a business that works, and a model that works, that we're actually just expanding to. Whereas the previous guys that were there, they did not have that. And so they were just new people going into the car business without much knowledge of the car business, and it's a very illusionary business. You might have $250 million in your account in a month, and you might have absolutely nothing the following. So if you really don't know how to run it, I think it's especially what happened with them. So we really take care of all the properties that we do, and in Revere, you can see, it's all pavement and all painted, and we, I could definitely tell you that we're interested in spending money there and making sure that it looks attractive for the community that also drives by. I can't promise you it'll be something immediate because of the, you know, we're going into a new location, we also don't know how it will be, but it's definitely in the plans to make sure that all, it's also a very big area, if you think about it, so paving the whole thing would definitely be very highly costed, but certainly something that's on plan, just like the inside, just the outside, and the signage as well, plans for changing the signages.
I'm excited, I'd love to see you go in there and succeed. That property was a very profitable thing. When somebody came in and ran it the proper way, it's a perfect location, you're right off of 93, you're not too far from 495, it's a great location, so I just wish you the best.
Thank you.
A couple of words of wisdom, just, you know, I think the other property owner came in before, I think he owned a place in Malvern as well, and he had a car dealership there and thought he'd be able to expand it, and just, I just, I'm hoping for the best, that's all, just take a look at what you're doing, and let people know it's a new business, that's my suggestion, that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. All right, last but not least, Mr. Sina, I did some homework on your operations in Revere, I can say it's very commendable, and that's the thing, we would scratch our heads where business owners would come in and establish their business, and this might seem petty, but then let the weeds go, or have violations. So I did some homework on your Revere business, it's very, it's commendable, and I think you're very articulate, I like your style, and to Mr. Kratman's point, big opportunity, hopefully, for you and your family, leveraging 93, 495, the car, and 38 to have a prosperous business. So, you know, I have nothing to add, and just for the residents, all the paperwork checked out, we do extensive, as you know, extensive checks with lawyers and town officials, and all the paperwork checks out. I read you the Riad Act from the previous owner, you know, to follow in line, so I you know, to follow line. So I just, I wish you a ton of luck.
Thank you.
And we truly hope, truly hope you can be successful. And we kind of hopefully planted the seed, how to be successful where the other business owners might have missed it. So again, I wish you a ton of luck. Welcome to Tewksbury.
I appreciate it.
And that's all I had. So I'm going to pause there and ask the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to transfer the Class II license from Alpha Motors LLC to Sina Motors 219, 2, 2195 Main Street.
I have a motion, I have a second from Mr. Kratman. Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Montori, please.
Can I just have Mr. Dick add with the conditions outlined by the chairman?
Yep. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the Class II application from Alpha Motors LLC to Sina Motors 2195 Main Street, um, based on the conditions that were outlined by the chair and the letter provided to us by Town Council.
Awesome. Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kratman. I have a motion, second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Unanimous. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you very much, Mr. Sina.
May I just ask you one question?
Please.
When you've mentioned about the property line, where can find out the, the limit that you guys would like me to keep the cars on?
We'll work through the town manager, Mr. Montori, on the specs, because I think they clearly define so.
I appreciate it. Thank you once again.
Thank you, guys. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming in. Good luck. Good luck. Welcome to town.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome.
Best luck, Mr. Sina.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Next order of business, 620. What we're going to have now is the DPW storm water presentation. Mr. Brian Gilbert loves this place. We do have a presentation. So what I'm just going to do for the presentation, I'm going to slide over and we'll go through the presentation.
Thank you.
Now I know why you were on this stuff this morning.
So I just talked with the senior.
Thank you.
I shall tell you.
Thank you, Kevin. I love you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just introductions. My name's Brian Gilbert. I'm the Director of Public Works. I'm here with
Kevin Hardeman, Town Engineer. Also with us is Fred Sivian from Mass DEP, Jeri Schwartz, and Amanda Combe from Weston and Sampson, Arkansas.
As you know, the town is required by federal law to obtain and comply with a permit under the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System, better known as NPTIs. In order to operate its municipal separate storm sewer system, better known as MS4. So we're dealing with a lot of acronyms because we're a federal government here tonight. In, in order, the MS4 permit allows the town to discharge its storm drain system into the waters of the United States. A new permit went into effect July 1st of 2018. For the last few years, the town manager, the town engineer, and myself have made known that there are numerous requirements in the new MS4 permit. These requirements represent new and significant costs associated with administration, operating, maintaining, upgrading stormwater infrastructure. The infrastructure that captures and conveys stormwater from impervious surfaces, these, um, surface elements of the infrastructure include catch basin, manholes, culverts, and hundreds of miles of buried pipe. Knowing that the inevitable would someday be upon us, we requested town meeting to fund the development of a plan consistent with the requirements of the permit and to look into, and to look at options for reliable funding source to address the permit and the improvements to the stormwater system. Over the past year, we have worked with Weston and Sampson, the Northeast Stormwater Collaborative, the EPA, DEP, and others, to put together a schedule of requirements, a schedule of costs and options for the funding which we are presenting this evening, without stealing any of the, uh, presentation, other than to say stormwater and clean water is everybody's business. Management of the system is not only a requirement of the new permit, but it's the right thing to do. The quality of our residents' lives improves when we eliminate flooding, which is a concern here in town. When catch basins drain, pipes flow, culverts don't fail, and the quality of our water that we recreate in is clean. I guess first, on the presentation, we're going to ask Fred Sivian of Department of Environmental Protection to give us an overview of the MS4 permit.
Thanks. Thank you. My name is Fred Sivian. I work for you. I am employed by Mass DEP. Wanted to give you the number on my desk. It's 617-292-5821. My job is to answer anyone's questions about federal, state, or local stormwater rules. What I wanted to do tonight is explain a little bit about why there's all of a sudden concern about stormwater. Tewksbury has been managing a stormwater system for decades and decades, doing a great job of being able to keep water out of people's basements, off the roads, keep culverts free flowing. There's been a recent, more recent concern though, about the environmental effects of a stormwater system. The same things that make your stormwater system very efficient, carrying water off hardscape surfaces and putting into local rivers and streams, also takes whatever pollutants that come to be located on roofs or parking lots and streets and puts them very efficiently into your local rivers and streams. Stormwater systems have no treatment in them, unlike, unlike a wastewater treatment plan. What's been happening over the decades is we, as a society, have done a very good job of reducing the amount of pollution that comes from a relatively small number of large pipes, wastewater treatment facilities, and industrial facilities. When EPA and DEP do their work of assessing the quality of our rivers and streams, we find out that they're too polluted. About two-thirds of the streams, ponds, rivers in Massachusetts do not meet federal state water quality standards. They're impaired. And we found, it was to my surprise, that the major cause of that pollution is stormwater, carrying those pollutants into rivers and streams. So what do we do about that? In 2003, the federal EPA has its first MS4 permit that attached itself to 240 towns like Tewksbury across the Commonwealth, about two-thirds of the largest towns in Massachusetts. Worcester and Boston have their own separate individual permits. My hometown of Dedham, town of Tewksbury, town of Templeton, town of Shrewsbury are all covered under this permit. The 2003 permit operated until 2018, when its successor MS4 permit came into play. The difference between those two permits is while that first permit from 2003 had the same structure as the new permit, it was very general in its requirements. Depending on how you count up the requirements in the permit, there are about three dozen requirements of the 2003 permit. The new permit has over 200 specific requirements in it. In other words, the towns have all been given a very, very finely grained set of requirements to do better stormwater management. So Tewksbury, along with the other MS4 towns in Massachusetts, again, there are 260 of them, are all dealing with how to fund the increase in stormwater management at the local level. These conversations that were happening tonight are happening in towns across the Commonwealth. I'm here tonight from DEP. My job is to answer any of these questions about stormwater. If you have any questions later, questions come up, I'm happy to answer them. I also gave, handed out a Think Blue Massachusetts duck, like Smokey the Bear. Think Blue Massachusetts has information on it about what problems stormwater causes. So if you go to Think Blue Massachusetts, Google it, you'll find out, find a lot of information. That's your taxpayer money through the state that's being used to fund a public education program across the Commonwealth to educate people about stormwater. Thank you. Thank you, Fred. So what is stormwater? As Fred said, you know, it's, it's rainwater, it's snowmelt, runs across the ground, it picks up pollutants, goes into a drainage system when one is present, and eventually it gets discharged to waters, streams, ponds, rivers, and empties out that pollution. So what is stormwater management? Well, stormwater management isn't just handling the runoff during a storm. It's not just meeting the requirements of the permit. Stormwater management takes a lot of forms. It's public education. It's removing illicit discharges. It's mapping the system. It's testing for water quality. It's controlling runoff on construction sites. It's upgrading and installing new infrastructure and maintaining that infrastructure. So there's four key goals that the town has for a stormwater management program. Meet the regulatory requirements of the MS4 permit. Invest in the future. Reduce stormwater flooding. And then control pollu-, uh, water pollution and improve water quality. So when we look at meeting regulatory compliance in the MS4 permit, uh, you know, this is mandatory. It's, uh, you know, it was put out by the EPA, like Mr. Gilbert said, it was, uh, effective of, as of last July. Uh, you know, and back in 2003, eight communities were fined a half a million dollars each for noncompliance. Uh, I say this not as a scare tactic. I say it to, to kind of put the information out there and to show that, you know, I, I know Tewksbury's going to make responsible decisions in what they do. And I just want to put that out to answer the question of what happens if we don't comply? You know, what, what are the repercussions? So when we look at the funding that we need, uh, under the MS4 permit, there's about one and a half million dollars required to comply with that permit in the first five years. Uh, that's broken down into about 50% of that goes towards operations and maintenance. 30% of that is for removal of illicit discharges. And then 20% goes towards planning and public education for compliance. Uh, stormwater flooding, uh, you know, many areas in store, in Tewksbury experience stormwater flooding. Two Mac Terrace, North Street, South Street at Bridge Street, just to name a few. You know, this flooding impacts property values, deteriorates roads, and impacts public safety. Uh, you know, increased development leads to increased impervious area, which ultimately leads to increased stormwater runoff. Climate change is another concern that impacts the ability for a stormwater system to handle the runoff during rainfall events.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump right in here. I mean, the previous slide was about, you know, we have to follow a process, but this picture tells it all. This picture tells it all. Residents are impacted, so I hope we're not handcuffed by the Commonwealth and rules and regulations, you know, to do the right thing. I mean, this picture tells it all. And this is only three pictures, and I would deal with other streets with catch basins. So I'll let you go through the PowerPoint and presentation, but at the end of the day, residents are impacted.
Yes.
So we need to get something done. We've been dealing with a couple of these, as you guys know, for, for years. So we'll talk, let's go through the PowerPoint, but I want to mention the word, I think we need to mention the word residents a few more times, because these pictures, what's a saying, tell a thousand words. And we talk about, once we go into the, to the fall and to the, to the winter, these things ice up. And we got pictures, it's crazy. So we can talk about rules and regulations, but it's time to take action. I'm quite certain we'll get there at the end of the PowerPoint.
Yes. Thank you. So if you recall back in March of 2010, uh, you know, we had two back-to-back hundred-year storm events, caused widespread flooding in town and closed some roads. Uh, you know, we've undertaken some projects to address those issues, but there's still more that needs to be done. You know, additional locations are, you know, Vernon Street, Nickel Street, Bay State Road, Forest Out. You know, this list goes on and on of the issues in town. Um, so when we look at the next slide, you know, Tewksbury has several water resources that need to be protected, including Long Pond, Shawshene River, and the Merrimack River. Um, you know, some of those water resources have impairments such as phosphorus. And it's important for us to educate the residents on how they can take steps to reduce stormwater pollution. Um, you know, and over time, those water bodies will become cleaner. You know, catch basin stenciling is something that we do, but we can't continue to rely on volunteers for those efforts. Uh, you know, we've worked with the Valley Collaborative and, and over this past summer, and we've stenciled many areas to notify people of where the water goes when it goes down the drain, it discharges to, to the water bodies. Um, you know, additionally, we have public education events where we're at the farmer's market or we're in school classrooms, you know, and those are things that need to continue. And we need funding in order to, to make that happen. On the next slide, we look at investments in the future. Uh, you know, it's important to make investments in the future. The stormwater system in Tewksbury is aging. You know, some of it's undersized and some of it's on the brink of failure. Recently, we had issues on Bayberry Lane, Marston Street, Shawshene Street, and most notably, Pinnacle Street. Uh, you know, we need to implement capital improvement plans that are less reactive and more proactive. Strategic investments need to be made to reduce costs associated with emergency repairs. Current funding for the stormwater maintenance comes from the general fund, and the majority of funding for repairs comes from Chapter 90 through, or through grants. This summer, we resurfaced approximately a mile of roadway at a cost of $400,000 from Chapter 90. But we also spent $300,000 on drainage, also from Chapter 90. Uh, if we can find a dedicated funding source for those repairs, we'll be able to utilize Chapter 90 for more roadway resurfacing and easily double the amount of roadwork we can do every year. Improve sidewalks and make the town, improvements we need to, to the roads to make them more drivable. Um, you know, in, in the past, we've relied on grants for funding. Shawshene Street is a good example. Um, you know, but those are becoming more competitive, more restrictive, and it's not something we can rely on for the future. Relying on the general fund, for instance, will result in increases in taxes or will take funding from other town departments and other town programs. Ultimately, we need, we need to find a funding source that's reliable, predictable, and doesn't take money away from other town departments. Massachusetts, in Massachusetts, stormwater enterprises have been around for years. Uh, there's over a dozen stormwater enterprises in the state right now, and more and more communities are exploring this option in response to the MS4 permit. Additionally, uh, stormwater enterprise funds are being implemented across the country. At least 40 states have stormwater enterprises, and more than half a dozen of those have 100 enterprises or more. So how do we establish a stormwater enterprise? Uh, first, we determine the existing and future budget needs. We looked at ways to link stormwater fees to users in a manner that's fair and equitable. Since impervious area is directly linked to stormwater runoff, the most fair and equitable way is to link the fee to impervious area. And when we performed a land use analysis of parcels in Tewksbury, uh, and then we looked at rate structures and options. So tonight starts the process of meeting with stakeholders to review our findings and formulate the best way to move forward. We plan to have public information meetings for residents prior to town meeting, and we'll be preparing a warrant article for town meeting to hopefully enact local legislation to create a stormwater enterprise. Like I said, our first step was determine budget needs. Uh, our budget projections show that over the next five years, we need an average of 1.52 million dollars to fully fund our program. This funding include, includes the compliance with the MS4 permit, capital improvements to culverts and drainage systems, and the operation and maintenance activities necessary to keep the systems functioning properly. So this pie chart shows a breakdown of the cost for each component of the program. And as you can see, operation and maintenance is huge. You know, uh, it, it's one thing to own a system. It's another thing to be able to keep it up. So we looked at three rate structure options, uh, and we based it on research we had done with other communities within the Commonwealth. So the first option would be a flat fee for a small residential, which is defined as one, two, or three family homes. And then it would be a rate based on the impervious area on commercial and large residential properties. The section, second option mirrors option one for small residential with a flat fee, uh, but has tiers for your large residential and your commercial properties. And then option three would be a tier system across the board based on the impervious area for the property. So our recommendation is option one. Uh, it's the fairest. It has the lowest cost of implementation. It can meet our budgetary needs based on the chosen rate, and it's consistent with what other communities are doing in the Commonwealth. Uh, so the next slide shows a couple of examples of sample rate structures. Uh, one is for Chelmsford, which uses a, a flat rate for one, a single family and two-family homes. Uh, and then other properties are in a tier system, like we had talked about. Uh, Shrewsbury uses a tier system across the board for residential and non-residential, but also includes a flat fee for undeveloped or vacant parcels. So these are just examples of what is going on in the area.
I had a question on that one there. As far as a tiered system, how would you determine the tiers? Like, for instance, three tiers, 90, 200, 350 bucks, 250 dollars. How would you determine tiers based on property size, property value, or?
Uh, impervious area on the property. So it would be, you know, zero square feet to maybe 3,000 square feet of impervious is your first tier. You know, three to 9,000 is your second, you know. Um, that's how you, you'd create your tier structure.
So you'd have to do an assessment essential on every single residential home slash business slash within the, within the town?
Right.
Okay.
And that's why we've decided that option one with a flat fee for residential is, it's much more simplified and, you know.
And some poor residential homeowner could get stuck with a huge bill because they bought property and they happen to have a ton of runoff or in that situation?
Right.
Where they require that extra drainage? So, okay. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Could I just follow up with a question?
Please, Mr. Brian Dick.
So you, you're just talking about a tiered system versus a flat fee, right?
Yes.
You're recommending a flat fee.
We're recommending a flat fee for
Across the board.
Small, what's called small residential, one, two, and three family homes.
Yeah.
And then large-scale residential or commercial properties, we would actually calculate their impervious footprint. And I'll get, we have a slide showing the calculation.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what Mr. Kelly was saying. Thank you.
Okay. So here's the assessment we had done for impervious surfaces. Uh, we analyzed 362 parcels in town and
Residential.
Residential parcels. And determined that the average residential parcel that we analyzed contains 4,359 square feet of impervious area. We create what's called an equivalent residential unit based on that number. Uh, and that's what would be used to compare to commercial properties to determine their overall fee. So on the next slide, we, we show what the, uh, cost would be assuming it's a $30 fee for an ERU. Uh, $30 per year for small residential would be about $2.50 per month. But commercial and large residential would be $30 per ERU. So for example, if a property had 4,359 square feet, they have one ERU, that's $30. If they have 8,600 and change, that's two ERUs, it would be $60 a year would be their fee. And, and it increases from there. So based on that number, uh, the next slide shows that what we would generate for small residential parcels in town is just over 7,800, as well as the 8,100 commercial and large, large residential parcels in town. Uh, when you combine those two numbers, we come to the next slide, which shows about 4,800, uh, $480,000. Uh, so, with that, we could fund about a third of our stormwater program through the enterprise. We would still have to supplement that with general fund for operating, Chapter 90, as well as seek one-time funding from grants and other programs such well as seek one-time funding from grants and other programs such as that. If we were to shift the rate to $45 per year, we would generate almost $750,000, and we can fund about half the stormwater program. We'd be able to shift some of the funding from Chapter 90 towards roadway resurfacing and make more improvements to our roadways. And to fully fund the program, we would need a rate of about $75 per year. So the last thing I want to talk about is billing, abatements, and credits. So for billing, the most simplistic way of billing the stormwater enterprise would be add a line item to our water and sewer bills. That would, you know, go out three times a year, be something that the residents already get, it wouldn't generate much of an administrative burden for us. When we look at water and sewer, there's an abatement process. There'd be an abatement process for the enterprise as well, in the event that there's a dispute over the measurement of impervious area. Since small residential properties, we're recommending to have a flat rate, the abatements would only apply to commercial or large residential properties. And lastly, credits, you know, in the future, we'd look to have a credit system and give credit to properties that implement stormwater BMPs beyond what's required under current regulations. So if a property goes above and beyond to treat their stormwater to improve the environment, we'd consider giving them credits for that.
Kevin, just on that bullet point, properties without water and sewer, is that the same proposed flat fee?
It's the same proposed flat fee, it's just instead of being able to add a line item to their current bill, if they're not getting a water bill and a sewer bill, we would have to generate a new bill for that property.
But essentially, the same cost?
Same cost.
Okay.
Yep. So that basically concludes the presentation. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to present this. As you can see, we've been working hard for the past year or so to develop a plan to manage and to create a funding source for the stormwater program. I'd like to thank my team for their efforts on the project. I'd also like to thank Fred Sidian for coming here tonight to help us present this, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer questions. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. So thank you.
Very good. Good job. Well done. Very tight presentation. So let's open up to the board for questions. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Okay. So I appreciate the presentation. Pretty simple concept to understand. I like the concept of an enterprise fund, because that's kind of what we do with the sewer and the water. I think we manage that, keep that out of the general fund, right? General fund, I like that concept. You know, this makes a whole lot of sense. You answered a lot of my questions about the timetable, why we're doing it now versus last year or this year. We're just stepping up to the plate and doing our part, and it's very, very important as it was outlined. So I appreciate those comments. My, I guess, a couple quick questions. I don't know if they really apply, but you know, if Tewksbury's doing their part, just some general, what about Andover, Berecker, Lowell, the neighboring towns, does that affect us in any way if they're not doing their part? Are they doing, are they stepping up to the plate too? Is that kind of a vague question and not a really important question? But I was just wondering, like, since, you know, South Tewksbury is so wet and Shawshene River, I just want to make sure that whatever our neighboring towns are doing, that we're not taking that burden on, and that everybody's doing their part.
That is a great question. And I think Fred might be better to answer which communities are covered under the MS4 permit, but my recollection, looking at the maps, it's, you know, every community around us is covered under this permit.
Maybe Andover can afford to pay the half a million fine, but Tewksbury can't, so I was just wondering how that was.
Yeah, two answers to that. Almost all the towns around you are MS4 communities that are likewise having to meet the same requirements of the MS4 permit. They all also have the same aging infrastructure issues, having to replace pipes that were built and installed decades ago. The second part of that is the EPA is overseeing how well towns are responding to the permit requirements. There were four towns that didn't submit their application for coverage under the permit on the due date. That was October 1st of last year. They started enforcement action within a few months on those, almost four towns. The fines that were levied for the 2003 permit have been mentioned before. The other thing that goes along with fines is administrative consent orders. For each of those towns that were fined in 2003, those towns also had to have a judicially overseen schedule of implementing the permit. That takes away local flexibility for how you're going to implement the permit. You in essence have a bureaucrat like me overseeing a specific town's permit. There aren't enough staff at EPA or DEP to oversee everyone's permits. Most of the permit is self-enforcing, you should do the right thing. But that taking away local flexibility is a major drawback for towns that do not meet the requirements.
For the record, Fred said that, not the board.
I guess really, it's, we're doing our part, that's all we can kind of control, and everybody else, and everything's kind of fall behind. So I appreciate that response. Real quickly, a couple of different points. I was taking them kind of how I written that. So is there any way for a homeowner to reduce the fee, like is there an abatement? Are you just saying the abatements are for more of the commercial side? Or are there home improvements that you can do to get, reduce the fee, or is it straight fee?
So one of our goals in bringing forth this...
Education, right?
Well, just as a proposal, was to do it in the most simple fashion that we could, you know, and like I said, we're going to look at credits down the road, whether that's, you know, credits for just commercial and large-scale residential, or if it will extend to small residential as well. There are some communities in the Commonwealth that do provide credits for smaller-scale residential, and you know, we'd definitely be open to that, you know, whether it's for rain barrels or rain gardens on your property or things like that.
Yeah, just a thought, I guess, down the road, and I know you, we're creating this, so we have to start somewhere, and the simplest way to do it, and we got to do it quicker than...
Right, and we, you know, we haven't written off, you know, credits at all. I mean, that's something we're definitely looking to...
Yeah, you're considering where it comes from as a town. Gotcha. I really like the, I don't know, I think Brian might have said it, but less reactive, let's be more proactive, right? And I think that's where we're at, and we need to educate that when we're talking fees to the town, which we plan on doing. When you talk about educating, what are some of the, I mean, I know you can offer the education and get two people to come, like what other ways are we reaching out to the townspeople and say, hey, this is a huge issue? You know, are we mailing some of this information that you handed out? Or are we, is it in the, planned to be in the next warrant? How are we reaching out to the townspeople to say, look, we're not just trying to oppose another fee, this is a huge issue, education, education, education?
So I believe this is our third summer in attendance at either the farmer's market or the community market or National Night Out. You know, we've been trying to get the message out there.
Yep.
We've attended programs at many, if not all, of the schools to educate the children, because they bring that message back home to their parents. We've posted to social media, the town's website, Twitter, on, you know, just educational topics, whether it's, you know, proper use of salt during the winter, or, you know, things that you should do when you fertilize your lawn in the spring. In addition to that, with the establishment of the town's television channel, we've worked with Brian Dorrington to post messages on that channel as well, you know, whether they're anywhere from a two-minute public service announcement that we have down to a 30-second public service announcement. So those are running continuously thanks to Brian.
There's a lot more of that. That's good.
And we have to reach out to different groups under this permit, which is a little bit different.
Right.
You might as well touch on that. I know that it's construction industry is one.
So there's a list of stakeholders that we're required to provide messages to, whether it's residents, commercial and industrial properties, contractors, things like that. And within the permit, you know, there's certain specific terms, and I don't know if Fred wants to elaborate on that, of when and how we have to reach out to them.
How many times?
While the previous permit in 2003 said you had to have an education program, this is an example of how finely grained this permit is, your educational program has to have, reach four audiences, residents, businesses and institutions and commercial facilities, developers, and industrial facilities, and has to have at least two messages to each of those groups over the permit term. And I think what you've been doing is exceeding the permit requirements for doing educational work.
Yeah, we've actually sent out messages to all of those stakeholders, and at least one message within the first permit year. And, you know, we continue and will continue to get those messages out over the five years. So, you know, I estimate we'll probably have 10 messages to each of those groups over the first five years.
All right, and I know I'm taking a lot of time, so there's one other question I want to get to. I'll leave some of the other ones off for other people, but I guess I wanted to flip to that, the budget projections. I know it was estimates, right?
Yes.
So I'm not, but I was just, I was just curious, like, on drain, like, one, I guess, from 2020 to 2021, that projection, that total is what you need to fund the program, correct? The first, 2020, the 1,148,000, right? That's, and then the next year, it's 1.6 million, which is a $464,000 jump.
Right.
So that means the fee would go up a certain percentage, right? Whatever that is in Tewksbury math, so I'm just...
Well, that's not necessarily what we're kind of trying to project here. You know, the fee could stay stagnant, but we need to find other funding sources for that, whether we pull from Chapter 90 or get grants or things like that.
Yeah.
So what you're seeing in that big jump really is, you know, on the culvert improvement and drainage improvement side, where we've got some design work funded in 2020...
And then reduces in 2021.
And then the construction is in 2021.
All right.
Yeah.
And it's good to see these numbers, and see like in 2024, the culvert improvement, since we did it for four years, is zero improvement at that point, I guess?
Well, it's because we haven't identified specific projects at this point. But we have identified more drainage improvements. So instead of, you know, kind of throwing everything out there, we want to stay more consistent. You know, once we get to years three, four, and five, if we can stay as consistent as possible, whether we're doing culvert work or drainage work or a combination of the two.
Yeah.
We want to kind of level fund this.
Okay, last point is, yeah, consistency is the key, right, for residents for the fee. I'm actually in favor of the fully funded fee schedule, which is 75 a year, the estimate, and it's billed three times a year, right, $25 a pop? Like, I'm in favor of that on the sewer and water bill, and the reason why I am is because I like using the Chapter 90 funds for what, for other projects like sidewalks and pavements. So that's, I'll say that's my last piece. Mr. Chair, thanks.
Very good. Ms. Jane Miller.
Thank you. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for coming forward, and thank you, Weston and Sampson people. You have a very good presentation. I can see that you spent some time on it. I've seen Arthur's presentation at various events, and it's a very nice 3D presentation, so he does a nice job with that. He's been doing that for a long time, I've seen him in the community for a few years. So I had a couple of quick questions for you. We're talking about the linking fees to impervious areas, and I wanted to know how retention ponds and other onsite mitigation that's required under other state law, is that factored into the, particularly for the commercial industrial usage? Because these are companies that are coming in and they're doing all of this, this work to retain and treat it onsite, and then they're going to get a fee, and I think that they might be concerned about why they're paying that. So if we can address that a little bit?
And that's a great question, because you, you know, you can look at it and say, well, they're only managing their, you know, they're managing their site well, why should they have to pay in? But you have to understand, they're getting to and coming from their site. They're using town roads, which has town drainage infrastructure. You know, large-scale commercial are bringing in a lot more traffic, there's a lot more wear and tear associated with the system. You know, cars carry pollutants, those pollutants drop off onto the road, run off into the stormwater system and into the lakes, rivers, and streams. So, you know, we've looked at it from that perspective, and, you know, the larger the parcel, the larger the development. It does have more impact on the stormwater system, not just on its own site, but townwide.
Okay. How do you plan to address the condominium owners in the community? That would be a large-scale residential, right, that would be measured under the higher end of the fee, is that correct?
Right.
Would you bill directly to condominium owners or through their association?
It would be to the association.
Looking at the fee structure, I appreciate Mr. Dick's comment. I personally am not a big fan of additional fees and unfunded mandates. However, as you're looking forward through your budget, I would be more interested in seeing what a sliding scale would look like, so that the first year is low and then it raises up over time. But I'm certainly open to the committee and the board and what they're, you know, having that debate. Finally, can you explain to me a little bit more about what operation and maintenance entails for a stormwater system? Is that like the catch basin cleaning and stuff like that?
That would be catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, you know, things that we don't do now that we should be doing, which is drain manhole cleaning. In addition to that, cleaning out pipes, you know, getting those out and making sure there's no sediment in the pipes so that they can drain freely and flow freely.
How many outflow areas do we have in Tewksbury? Isn't that part of the permit? You have to count how many outflows?
Outfalls?
Yeah, outfalls, sorry, outfalls.
I want to say, I want to say it was like 680, somewhere along that.
Yeah, I thought it was around 600. Last I thought was 637, but we add them.
Oh, it's a lot. No, 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 it's a lot. So I participate in the education side, so I love the rubber ducky videos that go, and particularly the dog ownership ones are personally favorites from mine that I like. So, and I saw that you put one of those out recently on Facebook. So thank you for your information, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, quickly, Brian, you might want to just, because Jane asked a great question about operation and maintenance. How much of the 606 or the, or eventually goes to 683, part of that's in the budget already, is that right?
If we take a look at labor and a percentage of various positions associated with or assigned currently to drainage, you have staff, so you have the staffing, you have the operating budget, and I added in a 20% factor for equipment and operating, so we have about 350,000 currently built into the budget in various line items.
Okay, so this is sort of a fully funded look at what it is, or what you anticipated would be, you'd bring those things into, they would be attributed?
That would be, that's the 75.
Right, and that would be attributed to the enterprise fund is what you're thinking? Would you, is that what you're planning to do?
No, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tronick.
I just want to piggyback on that thought. So you currently, because when I was, when you were going through your slide, of course, the first slide, when it talks about the mandate, and I'm like, oh, that's not that bad, we can look at two, now I've seen the rest of the things, but if I'm somebody not seeing this for the first time, you look at it and you think, oh, this is going to cost us about 250K a year, like, that's manageable. Then as the slides get on, the cost, obviously, which we've been talking about this more than just the last three years...
True.
That you all, I feel like we've been talking about this forever in my perspective. But as the cost gets on, so I just want to say that as we go out to the public and talk about this, I would like people to get that sticker shock sooner. I realize that we're kind of, but we're kind of like saying, oh, you know, it's not that bad, and then the presentation goes on, and it looks worse and worse as every slide comes forward. So the stormwater management, when you're talking about the permit, that's one small piece of what it is that you're doing. And to Mr. Montori's point about what we're already paying for, and when you did your little pie chart of 50%, 30% and all of that, if we fully funded this the way that we're looking at it today, I would also like to know how that maximizes the... looking at it today, I would also like to know how that maximizes the staff that we already have. So you're going to be potentially taking some of your DPW staff who are doing some of this work currently, similar to what we do with the Water Enterprise, moving their salaries into that fund, correct?
Uh huh.
Would you backfill those positions or would this be a save? Like, I know that the roads and the Chapter 90 money, but is there a savings to the town on that end that could lessen? Now, I don't know, I'm not asking for an answer tonight. I'm not putting you on the spot, but what I'm saying is, when we're rolling this out to the public, we need to be able to address those. From my experience sitting on this board, people have, I agree with the enterprise and the concept of that. I like the fact that we're taking a fund and we're saying, this is what this money is dedicated to, and we're spending the money on that. I think that that's really important. But there are some people in our community who are nervous about enterprise funds, worry about us getting large balances in enterprise fund, what that balance is used for, and so if we're going to be moving staff, say, off the DPW onto an enterprise fund, because that's what it takes to do this stormwater, so it is appropriate, how, what's the offset on that?
Okay. Yes.
I think that was the point that you were talking about. So when you were talking about how this costs, and I folded the paper, about determining budget needs, I don't think that we can talk about the stormwater budget needs without talking about the DPW budget needs. We had a lot of conversation in the last selectmen's meeting about the DPW and the needs that they have and how we need to, it's something that we service our residents on, they expect it. So we, I just would like to see them dovetail a little bit more in this presentation somehow, if that even makes sense. But the other thing that kind of jumped out at me, I'm glad that Jane talked about the condo fees, and I do have a resident who, the credits and the abatements, because to your point about those industries that are already having large-scale impacts because of their business per se, I'm assuming that there's going to be some, they could file for an abatement just because there's like, we're already paying double or whatever. That could be a reason, because an abatement, it's to the eye of the beholder what the reason for. So I think we have to think about who's going to control those abatements, how we're going to manage those abatements, because administratively, that could be quite cumbersome, even if it's just the commercial, because they're going to be hit with a larger fee. Credits, when we talked at our last meeting about stormwater, I had a resident call me. She lives at 6 Hinckley Street. If you want to look at somebody's property who's doing a lot of stormwater management on her own property and doing a lot of gardening and without chemicals and things like that, if we could use her for one of those infomercials of somebody who's already doing things like that, you might want to reach out Todd Jean at 6 Hinckley Street. I can't think of her last name off the top of my head, but she called me very interested in this topic, and it's something that she feels that we need to address. She agrees with it, but was also saying, you know, similar to Mr. Dick's point, individuals that are doing their part, whether it be, we can't control other communities, but, so I like the fact that you built something like that into it, and I think that that's useful. I just want to say that I too am not a fan of unfunded mandates, but that's what we have in front of us, and as a town, we do have to take some kind of action. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and I'm looking forward to it being refined. In terms of the enterprise, people are kind of talking about where their position is, I am in agreement. In terms of what that fee should be and how, I would like to see more information in terms of how that depicts what you're doing down at the DPW. So I'm looking forward to, you know, I like that you said this is how much it would be now, and I'd like a little bit more backup of how you got to some of the numbers, mostly the culvert improvements, the drainage, because I'm assuming some of those are in our five-year capital plan.
That's correct. Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So I just think it's important for people to know that these numbers, we didn't just make these up, and that this is stuff that we have been planning for the last five years. So kind of take all of your work that you've been doing and bring it forward, full circle. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, Kevin, can you repeat? I know that $30 was 480,000 a year. What was the 45 and 75 again?
45 is roughly 750,000.
Yep.
And the 75 is roughly 1.5 million, so it fully funds the, the program.
And one more question, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. And that, when you're talking about that, that is based on using the units with the commercial, realizing that some of those will be larger?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you've already factored that into that cost? You have an idea of what your commercial ERUs would be?
Right.
Is that ERUs? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Mark Krappman.
Thank you. I'm interested in the part of the education of what you'd be going out there and putting out. If somebody, you get a commercial business that out there, they have a large number of trucks, talking to them about idling vehicles, something sitting there that's on the pervious surfaces, we're replacing culverts out in our, out in our roadways, are we also looking at the weight limits on those culverts? I mean, are we upgrading them to what today's standards may be compared to what we may have been doing, you know, replacing culverts from, you know, 40, 50 years ago? Is this something that we're looking that, you know, we're getting a lot more vehicles, maybe a lot more heavy vehicles that are going through those areas? Is this something that we're looking at to improve those type of things and, and the education behind it?
We are. So as far as education goes, you know, we have to, to check a lot of boxes in who we send, what messages to. You know, like I said, whether it's residents for pet waste or, you know, developers for construction site runoff, you know, and we like to target, and I don't say target as in, you know, go after, but I mean, you know, target our audience and generate messages that will resonate with them and, and give them ideas on how they can implement practices to reduce stormwater pollution. As far as culvert replacements go, you know, we always look at long-term solutions when we do any sort of capital project. You know, a lot of the culverts in town are corrugated metal pipe, and a lot of the foundations under them are just, you know, whatever backfill was underneath the road at the time. You know, we do geotechnical evaluations, we do structural evaluations when we generate any sort of capital project and capital improvement. You know, we're not just putting in a, a pipe just because that's the same size pipe or the same type of pipe that was there, because that may not be the proper application for it. You know, and anything we have in town, we're looking at, you know, making sure that there are no weight limits or restrictions on the roadways.
Well, that brings me back to your point when you were saying, you know, we do have some businesses in town that may be doing runoff, taking care of their property, but we're also doing these upgrades so those vehicles can get to that property, and that's where that money is going to.
Right.
So that's why I was leading in with that, to say, we have to do this, the town has to pay to upgrade these roads so you can get your vehicles to your business that, you know, you may be collecting your runoff, but we're doing all this work to make sure that you can bring all your trucks there, or you can bring all your vehicles there, and it's a cost to the residents. So that's where the fairness comes out of it, on my take. Also, I think, you know, some of the places we have, like in a lot of businesses, abut wetlands, abut, you know, the Shawshine River itself, abut all these different places, and I've been by a lot of them, well, with the beautification committee, we're doing cleanups and talking about how we're building rain gardens and we're doing those type of things, and that kind of education of maybe working with lands. Somebody, when they're coming in, maybe even before the planning board, if somebody's coming in and trying to take a business, maybe we can incorporate some of this stuff into their thought process. Maybe we always look at, okay, it looks pretty if you put a couple of trees out front or you do that, but if you're abutting the Shawshine or you're abutting a wetlands, should we be putting something in there to say, you know, we would like you not only to put the lighting and these type of things out there, but we'd also like you to do some landscaping and do some things. We always keep onsite retention, but how else can you improve since you are but a main waterway of our community? If you're narrow, if you're narrow, you know, a wetland or you're near the Shawshine, you're opening, I mean, I've been by a bunch of those places where it seems like everything's washed away. Because all the water comes right off their property and it flows right down, and it's been sheet flow going off and it's going right through, where that's a big factor that we have problems in this community. And something as simple as them going out there, putting gravel and building some, you know, putting a rain garden in or putting something that would be collecting and stopping that direct runoff into our streams would be helpful. So when you're putting this presentation together, I think maybe this would be something we may even want to look at for our building codes as we go forward as well.
Okay. We will.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. I had that. I think just raising awareness with the planning board and conservation committee, just name a few, would probably be in our best interest as a town, so maybe we can take that as an action where I think it'd be privy to Mr. Krappman's point to kind of be proactive with something coming down the pike. All right, so here I go. I'm not going to shoot the messenger, but I'm going to have a friendly conversation. So this is, you know, for, for residents, I know this is a big, big issue, stormwater for the town. I can tell you just being a selectman for a few years and dealing with a few situations where it is a terrible mess, and just like everything requires funding. But a little bit about me is saying for the residents, here's another mandate from the Commonwealth. You know, we, we need Chapter 90 funding. We know it's coming down the pike. This is a big issue. You can read about it nationally, too. This isn't just a Tewksbury issue or even a local issue, it's, it's national. And you guys highlighted that today with your presentation. But my blood kind of boils when the folks at Beacon Hill said, you know something? This is going to cost a lot of money. Let's go to the local towns and have them spend, even if it's 30 bucks. So again, that's where my blood boils. It's not little, it's significant, and 30 bucks adds up for every cost in town. So I'm not shooting the messenger, but I am fighting on behalf of the residents where we try to keep, do our part to keep taxes low. And oh, by the way, no matter what we decide, it's going to go to town meeting anyhow. That's how our body of government extends through this board, but I didn't want to call that out. And again, that's just my personal opinion, not the board's.
If I may, I work for the State Department of Environmental Protection. In 47 of the states, these programs are run directly by the state. And I can tell you, if this program were run by the state in Massachusetts, it would have been a different program. And you could get an understanding of that, looking at DEP's comments to EPA, before the federal EPA issued this permit, included comments saying that the administrative requirements are too much for towns, will cost towns too much money, it would divert money that would better be spent on stormwater pollution prevention than we're going to administrative work. So I, I do get your point. It was, it's a federal mandate. I think that you, Tewksbury and the two other, 259 MS4 towns are all facing that same issue. Mass DEP does not administer this permit directly, it's administered by the federal EPA. That said, if you or anyone else have any questions about the nature of those mandates, whether it's been reconsidered at the federal level, I'm happy to talk about that.
That's fair. I just like everything at the local level. That's it. You know, and it's a cost to the residents. And representing the resident Tewksbury, you know, that's, I have to bring it up, but I will bring it up. We had a former STEAM colleague, Mr. Todd Johnson. It's interesting, I see like some, some tie-ins to the sewer. So Tewksbury was proactive as far as sewer way back when. We did a ton as a town, again, predating myself on the board, but a lot of board members, previous board members, we rolled up our sleeves, we got sewer infrastructure, and all of a sudden, now we see the Commonwealth helping the towns, because we have very, very little for being proactive or preemptive in our approach to deal with sewer. And again, Fred, this is directed to kind of the board and to the town, not to you in particular. So I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to get in a scenario where we're being proactive or preemptive, which we should be, but then we miss the boat and two years from now, all of a sudden, all the other cities in town start doing their fair share, and we miss the boat for allocated dollars? So just want to put that in the back of the mind, where I think we were really fast in developing and designing sewer across our town, and at the end of the day, for a lack of better words, you know, I think we got screwed for being proactive and preemptive, and we've talked about that with the level of Chapter 90 funds that we get in lieu of being proactive. So again, seems like the ball's just getting rolling, so food for thought, how we continue to press legislation, our representatives to get more money so that we don't make this huge investment, and two to three years, we kind of missed, for a lack of better words, additional dollars, if that makes sense.
Understood.
Okay. And last but not least, I see this as a liability for the town. Like I said, we've all got numerous calls and pictures tell a thousand words. You had three pictures up there, and I'm sure we can do many more pictures with streets that impact residents in town. So with that being said, I know Mr. Montori's going to cringe, but though I always say, selectmen, our job is to do whatever we can for residents to keep services up and lower taxes, so we haven't talked about maybe an option to potentially just look at free cash as a potential option. I know Mr. Montori's blood's boiling over there, but just as an option, because even if we can offset it in some way, shape or form, whether it's $5, $10 or $15, I do believe that would make a significant difference. And I like Ms. Jane Miller's approach, too, the idea of, of a tiered model, where we're going from 30 to 40 to 50. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're trying to keep taxes reasonable, and that's another creative way that myself or the board can say, hey, we looked at opportunities for free cash, we can take a little bit of that, because this is a huge liability, we have to get the work done, and I always call free cash an oxymoron, but we can take taxpayers' dollars that are already contributed to the town and the community and leverage some of those dollars, whatever that percentage might be, to offset the cost or my direction.
That's a great point. No, and after tonight, those are the things we're going to look at, and to selectman Miller's point that we do look at a sliding scale type to get to maybe the fully funded number down the road, but that's absolutely what we're looking at, a combination of everything.
Yep. Even if it's sliding approach, and we can demonstrate to the residents, says, hey, your elected officials are actually working on behalf of you, because like I said, for the majority, we know this is a big deal, I think the community knows it's a big deal, but I'll be honest with you, for the majority of the residents, they probably don't think it's a big deal, and at the end of the day, they're getting a particular bill, and I hope you guys appreciate that, so. And again, all my comments, we're not shooting the messenger. You two in particular in the DPW have been, have done a tremendous job, even when the phone rings, we call Mr. Montori through you, to help residents with these massive, they're not even puddles, they're ponds, to help take action. I know you guys are always, don't have enough folks on it, so this is, again, you guys are doing a terrific job. I love the word of being proactive. It's in need of the town, but as a selectman, I just want to make sure we can do whatever we can to help the residents with the cost. That's my job, and so. So I have, any other questions or comments before we conclude? Ms. Tronick?
I was just thinking, I couldn't agree with everything that everyone said, and I know that you guys are getting ready to roll this out to more and more public, and I think to Mark's point, it would be great if you could just throw some helpful hints in here on good practices as we're presenting to people, rather than saying, here's a, here's a bill, but, you know, again, I think that the point about the education piece can't be lost in the presentation of fixing the unfunded mandate that we dealt with.
Very good. All right, once again, guys, please thank the team for everything they do in this area, and, and we know they do a ton. So thank you guys so much, and I'm sure we'll revisit this very soon. Thank you, guys. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Mr. Gilbert, I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Yes.
Thank you. Good night. Good night, Kev. All right, that brings us to the local, that brings us to residents. Are there any residents at the time that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to new business. So we have a request from the St. Vincent de Paul Society of St. Williams Parish, Friends of the Poor Walk slash Run. Do we have anyone present? I didn't believe so. So team, essentially, we got in our packet here, it's a one-day run, I can jump to the dates quickly, but at the end of the day, I think this is a repeat of an event. Let me just get to the dates, unless someone has the dates. I'll get to the dates.
September 28th.
Do, 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 I have it right here. Where's it, Mr. Brindick?
September 28th.
September 28th.
9:00 AM.
Perfect, okay. Going from the church, St. Williams, to the high school. I know all the paperwork is in line, in line from all our department heads, so at this point, any questions from the board? I have none.
I have none either.
Okay. With that saying, what's the pleasure? school. I know all the paperwork is in line, in line from all our department heads. So at this point, any questions from the board? I have none.
I have none either.
Okay. With that saying, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Vincent de Paul Society of St. Williams Parish Friends of the Poor Walk Run for September 28th as submitted.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. All who's in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next is the special town meeting warrant articles. Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So warrant articles are, the deadline for submission is this Friday. Just to give you an overview of what will be added to the warrant, and I wanted to see what the board had, any that they wanted to add themselves. We have the normal articles to fund any projects that are outstanding from department heads, any budgets that may need funding from department heads. We have some prior year bills that we'll need to fund. We will be bringing forward articles for the property maintenance bylaw that was mentioned by the board at a previous meeting for blighted properties, properties that aren't having a proper upkeep. We put together a draft bylaw. And even though we're submitting these on Friday, there's still time to change them if someone sees something they want to change before the final warrant. We will be putting funding in there, $2.2 million for the design, project management for a new DPW facility, as discussed at a previous board meeting. We will be putting in an article on behalf of the board to adjust the marijuana bylaws, to remove the sunset clauses that are on there. We need to adjust the zoning map per a, the attorney generals are ruling on our most recent bylaw change for billboards. The board needs to discuss whether they want to move forward with a senior tax relief program tonight, and we can discuss that in a few minutes. Small cell bylaw is something that's been brought up in the past, addressing the upcoming potential of 5G wireless coming to the community. I've sent off a current right-of-way bylaw that we have to our special counsel that works on cable television issues as well as wireless communications issues. And he's reviewing that to see if we need to make amendments to that, or should we have a, just a brand-new small cell bylaw, which I have one drafted that can be inserted on Friday. So those are the articles that we're looking at, in addition to, again, the standard ones that you see each year for budget adjustments, capital budgets, use of free cash, use of additional state aid, and potential increase in new growth. State aid this year, we'll have an additional five, approximately $500,000 because of increases to state aid and the final budget at the state level, as well as our state and county charges are not as high as we anticipated. We'll probably see an additional $300,000 in new growth compared to what we projected. That's being finalized for certification. In free cash, we're anticipating somewhere around $4.3 million. So those are the articles that we're bringing forward. I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss any additional ones or any concerns of any ones that we're bringing forward. I think the senior tax relief one is something that I just need some guidance on.
Questions from the board?
I have some comments if that's.
Ms. Stronach.
So, thank you, Mr. Montori. I do know that the warrant is a huge lift. So I appreciate the work of you and your team on that. My comments are, I'm looking forward to the small cell response back as the, you know, as this comes back in terms of fees and things like that where we've talked about. So I'm looking forward to that. The other thing is, we talked a little bit earlier tonight, and Mr. Chairman very eloquently spoke about the use of free cash. And I don't know with, you know, I know that when we do borrowing or an article for the 2.2 for the DPW, I don't know if there is, could be some of that used for that project as well. So I just want to put that out there.
So right now, on the DPW facility, the plan, and again, until I see any final budgetary needs or capital needs, the plan would be, plan would be to raise and appropriate funding from using the additional state aid and new growth, and then, which is approximately $800,000. And then the remainder coming from free cash.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I just want to note for the record, because I feel like, again, we've been talking about marijuana for a long time. And I just want residents to know the sunset clause in this, we have to close the loop on that. So this is really closing down all of the work that has been done and voted on as the residents have asked us to do. So sometimes when people see something like that, they think that this is something new. It's not, and it's really just closing those loops. So I'm happy to hear how, you know, those things are coming to an end. And then with the billboards, if you could just explain a little bit more, because there's been a lot of kind of miscommunication or misunderstanding of what the bylaws are now because they, we've had some weighing in at the state level. I think that that's what's impacting this. Is that correct?
Yes. So the attorney general reviews all bylaw changes, and they approved all the bylaw changes, but they made, I just want to go to the actual letter. They did review the billboards, although they approved it, they did comment that we needed to make an adjustment to our zoning map, or recommended a change to our zoning map that the assistant town manager, Steve Sadwick, is going to put together for town meeting. I just want to see if I can locate that.
So while you're locating it, the reason I bring that to everybody's attention is I don't want anyone to, again, think that we're skirting the issue because it was a very lively discussion at town meeting. So I just want to note, the action that's going to be taken at the special is being driven by comments of a review of the bylaw that we submitted based on town meeting. So I know that you're going to put it in your summary of town meeting, so I'm comfortable with you not finding the documents.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. I think it actually had to do, they commented on the billboards, and then they commented that the zoning map wasn't attached to one of the other articles that we should go back and bring to town meeting. So it's a combination of a couple of things.
So I just want people to understand that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
So, Mr. Chairman, so I just wanted to see if the board was comfortable with the small cell bylaw, whether it's a new bylaw or amendment to our current bylaw for right-of-way, the property maintenance bylaw, the marijuana bylaw changes, and the, there was one other.
DPW.
DPW, if the board's okay with those being submitted.
Okay, even if we submit them, even if we make.
They can always be adjusted and pulled.
Beautiful. So even if we make a vote to submit them, close it on Friday, we can always reopen as required?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Brian Dick, could you have some?
Uh, no.
Okay, very good. All right. Ms. Jane Miller?
On the small cell bylaw, how is that different than what we passed in April? What are you planning to bring forward?
In April, the.
We took some action.
The policy?
Yeah.
So we had that discussion, and we were trying to determine if the policy, we just need to maintain the policy or go bylaw. And council felt that, not quite sure which way was the better route, but a bylaw always gives you more teeth.
Sure.
Someone can challenge the policy and say it doesn't have the full backing of a town meeting. So we felt, you know what, let's go to town meeting, let's put it in place as a bylaw. Anybody challenges us, we're in good standing, could have our feet on the ground.
So is it like some congruity with the policy in terms of a fee structure and so forth?
We'll match it all up.
I see, okay.
And what we may even do is to make the, make it easier for us. Maybe the bylaw isn't as detailed, and the bylaw gives the board of selectmen the authority to implement a policy or regulation similar to what we did. So that way, you can change it as time goes on.
Right. As we become more and more and see sort of examples across the country as they roll it out, there may be some lessons learned that we can adapt.
Correct. But instead of having to go back to town meeting, town meeting gives you the authority to make those changes. So we might marry, we might marry them both.
I think that's good.
Oh, sorry.
So there was some discussion about senior tax relief, and I'm very interested in senior tax relief for the community, as most of you know. I think that there's not a lot of time between now and October to come up with and have the debate internally in the community, see how we want to do that. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but I'd like to see us dig deeply into how we can present that to the community as an option, perhaps for annual town meeting. But I don't know how it would really be done before October at this time. So I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, I'm with you. I mean, I just think.
For my comments.
Yep. We have a very short runway. I know you're going to pull a lot of numbers together. And I do think we need time to like socialize that with the Council on Aging, with the Finance Committee. So that might be a tough one to kind of put the pedal to the metal.
I would agree.
So we'll have to, you know, we'll have to take Mr. Montori's direction if that's something you think we can package up for the fall, or if it isn't our best interest to kind of, I'm not saying slow play it, but kind of pull it together, seek all the options, and then get it in front of all the different stakeholders so we're all aware kind of what we're trying to achieve.
Budget process, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we did just recently increase some of the thresholds for our exemptions. And if you wait till May town meeting, you'll have more information to base your decisions on. Plus, we'll be going into the budget as Jane just mentioned, and we can have a better idea how we want to approach it. And it just gives you more time to see how other communities are doing it. Plus, there's one other thing that's going on. The Mass Assessors Association is really pushing for legislation.
Yeah.
That allows cities and towns just to adopt a state statute to, at a local option to implement this instead of your own home rule petition, which takes a long time. So that all may play out. So you'll have better information from the Mass Assessors Association, find out how well the communities are doing, get a track record for those communities. So I think that's a wise decision.
Ms. Stronach?
I would, I agree with all those points. And thank you for that information on the legislative, because I was not aware of that. But that even makes more sense. But the other thing is, it's not, I mean, while I do agree that we have to socialize it with the seniors in the Finance Committee, we also, it will impact the larger community. So this is really a discussion for our entire community because it would impact every taxpayer. So I agree that we could hold on that to get some more time.
Well, I think, I don't think we need to make a vote, Mr. Montori. I think we have our decision here. So we can maybe take that off the plate, if you would, and then we can just get back to regular business. And so we're basically seeking a vote to go ahead and close the special town meeting of warrant articles for Friday, whatever that date is.
And I'll add those articles I mentioned and all the other standard articles and whatever articles that come forward in the next few days. And there'll be time if we need to take any off or adjust them.
Okay. Ms. Stronach?
I'm sorry, just one more question. In those articles, although we're supporting of them, you're going to be, if they're going to be coming under the town manager, or they're coming under the board of selectmen just for.
For now, I'll put them under the town manager. And once the board gets comfortable with them, they can choose to adopt them.
We'll probably support. I just want to be clear. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion. All the articles that the town manager proposed us to submit to the warrant, I'd like to motion, make a motion to submit them.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, very good. It brings us to school committee vacancy. So what I want to do is just read a quick letter, and then I turn it over to Ms. Montori for kind of the next steps, if you would. So, Dear Mr. Kelly and the Board of Selectmen, this is to notify you of the request of the Tuxbury School Committee to conduct a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to appoint an individual to fill the school committee member vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Dennis Francis. And again, not to get into matters, but Dennis Francis was well-respected, and he did resign for personal reasons. It goes on to say, please contact me at my office at a particular number, or Mr. Keith Sullivan, Mr. Keith Sullivan, the chairman, in order to schedule a joint meeting to fill the school committee members vacancy. Sincerely, Christopher J. Malone, Superintendent of Schools. Keith Sullivan is the chairman. Jamie Cutlass is the vice chair. Shannon Demos is the clerk, and John Stedman is the member of the Tuxbury School Committee. So, Mr. Montori, obviously, we need to formulate a joint meeting to appoint and/or elect a member to the school committee. So maybe just want to highlight, like, as far as roles and responsibilities and timelines.
Sure.
For next steps?
Sure. So the school committee has fulfilled their, their end of the statute, which is to notify the board that they want to fill the position, they want to participate, obviously, in the appointment of the, or it's actually an election of the person to, to fill the vacancy. And it's important to note that someone that's elected to fill the vacancy would serve until the next election. And then the board would need to vote to notify the town clerk to add that vacant position to the next local election. So if it's okay, the board can do a couple of things tonight. The first would be to set a date to advertise for residents to submit their application to the board, board's office to, of interest to be, to fill the vacancy on the school committee, and set a date when those applications are due by. If it's okay with the board, I can utilize the application that was used by the Board of Selectmen for the previous school committee opening. That was something that was approved by the board and the school committee at the time. So using that, again, I think would be good consistency. So I think the board setting the date deadline for that tonight would be the first thing. Second, authorize, obviously, the chairman to work with the school committee chair to set up a date after the deadline to meet and interview applicants. And then that night, appoint somebody. We just need to give seven days notice of that meeting, which we'll do once the chairs decide on a date. And then the last thing is for the board to vote to inform the town clerk in writing to include the vacancy on the next, on the ballot for the next local election. And that position would fill the one-year unexpired term that's left by Mr. Francis. And those really would need to be done.
All right, very good. I think, so there's a school committee meeting tomorrow. So I would request, I did speak with the chairman, Mr. Keith Sullivan. I'll try to attend the meeting just to give them a quick update. I guess might only ask if I can attend. It's just to put a few bullets for Mr. Sullivan can kind of read is the actions that we are going to take in the next couple seconds slash minutes, just saying, listen, it was in front of the board, they voted on A, B, and C. I would like to put the pedal to the metal in the fact that we can talk about as far as dates advertising. What's typical, even for our committees or boards, Mr. Montori? Is it kind of a two week, we give typically a two-week deadline?
We've given a week, two weeks, whatever you're comfortable with. We can go two weeks from Friday or two weeks from today, whatever you'd like.
I'll make some recommendations and then see if we can get a motion. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we post Friday for two weeks. And then our next selectman meeting is September 10. However, I am going to recommend that we do a separate meeting because depending on the number of applicants, what we'd like to do is interview all the applicants. And we're going to go for the appointments. We're going to shoot for the appointments that particular night, interviews and appointments. So schedule a meeting. Again, I'll work with the, with you all and the chair on the Tuxbury School Committee, Mr. Keith Sullivan, to kind of put a date. But I really would like to schedule something for the week of September 10. And again, very important that we fill it. They have four members. We did absolutely need a fifth member. And they also want to move with a sense of urgency. So again, just to kind of high level, let's post on Friday for two weeks. Let's have a meeting the week of September 10 outside of the next scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. And last but not least, piece of cake to update the town clerk to kind of post that and get the motions going for the next election. So I think it's that easy unless I'm missing something.
That's right. That's good.
Okay.
And I'll provide the bullet points for the school chair as well as a copy of the application we used for the last.
Beautiful. Perfect. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I'd like to start making motion to advertise the opening for the school committee, I guess, starting tomorrow with ending two weeks on. um, I guess starting tomorrow with ending two weeks on the 30th, August 30th, is that correct?
5:00 PM, 4:00 PM.
You have the calendar, mister.
Yeah, so the, today's the 13th, this Friday's the 16th, two weeks from the 16th is the 30th of August, so my motion would be to close it on the August the 30th.
I have a motion.
Which I think's plenty of time, I-
Absolutely.
It's almost, I think, too much time, but I think, I think that's plenty of time. If you want to shorten it up, I'd be in favor of that, too.
Yeah, I just think it's standard for the boards and committees, we typically two weeks, this is important, and one of my thought process, too, is our next meeting is September, September 10th, so we have a little bit of time to post for two weeks, get candidates, review their resumes, and then have a meeting the week of September 10th, so I'm, I'm comfortable with the two weeks if, if you all-
I would second the motion.
Second motion, so-
I have a motion, second, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That'd be August 30th, yep.
I think being in the summertime-
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
If it wasn't the summertime, a week would probably be fine, but-
It's more than two weeks, yeah.
Okay, um, do we really need a motion for me to work with our board and Mr. Keith Sullivan to come up with a particular date?
No, I don't need a vote, but I just think as long as you should, the board understands you're gonna work those dates out.
Okay, perfect, fair enough, board?
You're aiming to have it, um, for the week of the 10th, inside of the school, the regular selectmen meeting.
Correct, yep, and it again depends, we could have two applicants or 10 applicants, but I think it's worthy enough to start potentially at six, and I'll be fair to the board, I'll try my best to work with the board, um, to really just get it done in one night, you know what I mean, uh, sometimes you drag it out, but I think we have the capability to do the interviews and do the appointment or slash election on one particular evening, so, uh, I will take the action to copy you, to keep you in a loop, and to seek your, um, your feedback as to work with the chair, you know what I mean, to set up a date, time to get it done.
I would just, uh, point out for the purposes of just pointing out that 9/11 is that, is that week, it's that Wednesday night, and so there are usually events that evening, so that's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you very much, you know I'll be there, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we inform the clerk through the town manager in writing of the need to, um, have the clerk add the position, the vacant position in the April town election for 2020.
Perfect, very good. I have a motion, second, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Astronik. Very good, thank you for taking that order of business, that brings us to Mr. Montori, town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few things, um, the, um, regional communication, emergency communications facility is moving along, um, on schedule and on, on budget, um, and, uh, one of the major parts of the project is bringing in new three-phase, um, electricity to the facility, uh, National Grid is going to undertake that work, but in order to do it, National Grid needs to set poles and bring lines over, um, the town property. Normally, similar to what we did with the high school project, we, uh, ended up giving, giving them an easement to go over town property with their poles and lines and other, um, other, uh, equipment, transformers, similar to, again, similar to the high school and even the town hall, but because town meeting is not until, um, October, which at that point I'll get approval for an easement, they'd like to start the work sooner, we would like the work started sooner to stay on schedule, uh, so they would need a license from the board of selectmen to go over our town land. Uh, the license is a standard license from National Grid that's in your packet, um, I would ask the board to vote to approve the license and sign it so I can get it back to them so they can get the work going, um, and us keep us on schedule. In addition, I just wanted to mention to the board that we did receive the, uh, recently a grant award from State 911 of a little over $2.6 million, uh, in our latest grant, uh, latest grant round, uh, to help fund the facility, um, for equipment and remaining construction costs, uh, bringing the total funding for this project from the state to $7.4 million, so that was great news for us, and we still have some equipment that we'll be seeking funding for in the next round, that's usually in April or March, but the funding that we received right now, uh, continues the project's construction, and, uh, we'll get the initial equipment in there to get us up and running, so that was great news that we received over the last week. But for the purposes of tonight, I'd asked the board approve the license agreement, uh, from National Grid, uh, and sign it, and we'll get the work going.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the license agreement for National Grid, um, as the presented by the town manager.
I have a motion, I want a second.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
The next item has to do with the, uh, elementary school building committee, uh, currently, right now, we have, uh, 12 individuals on the committee, uh, made up of various school administration, um, myself, representative for the planning board, residents, and now that we've, uh, we're getting into the actual, uh, design development phase of the project, where we're dealing with facilities and operations, um, I spoke to the, uh, building committee and the chair about, and the superintendent about increasing the size of the committee to 13, um, and add the, uh, school business manager, Dave Libby, so I wanted to present that to the board tonight as, uh, a, a recommendation to see if the board is interested in doing that, uh, and if so, uh, it would need two votes, the first is to increase the size of the committee to 13 and to appoint, uh, the school business manager, Dave Libby.
Astronik?
Thank you, um, as the representative who, um, represents you on that committee, I did speak to the board about this, we think that not only is it timely because of the construction, but now we're getting into the nitty-gritty of the, um, finances that are going to be put forward, and as you know, it is, um, yeoman's work, doing all the PACOR and all of that, things that go with it, so I will tell you that the board, the elementary committee was very supportive of this, and Dave Libby has been attending the last several meetings, um, this would give him the opportunity to vote and would also give us, uh, 13, which is a better number when you're working with a committee to have an uneven number, just in the event.
Further evidence, and congrats on being the chair, that's a very important committee, I know you guys have a lot of heavy lifting in front of you, so congrats.
Thank you so much.
That's it, what's the pleasure, board, looking for two potential votes, one to extend the elementary school committee, elementary school building committee to 13, and then a second, um, vote would be for the appointment of Mr. David Libby.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to increase the, um, number of voting members on the elementary building committee to 13.
I have a motion, I have a motion, second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to appoint business manager Dave Libby to the, um, committee, and I would like to do that by title of his position, so not as an individual, but as title as the business manager for the Tuxbury Public Schools.
Second.
Motion is second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much, Astronik, congrats again.
Thank you, and the last thing, Mr. Chairman, there is a town council bill for July 1st, 2019 through July 15th, 2019, in the amount of $1,445, and I would ask the board, uh, to approve that invoice.
I'll make a motion to approve town council, uh, invoice rendered for, uh, July 1st, 2019 to 2000, July 15th, 2019, in the amount of $1,445.
Motion, I want a second.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And I think that concludes Mr. Montori's updates.
That is it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You see, Mr. Montori's keeping the rubber ducky there.
Someone wants it.
He has a great job.
Taxpayers' dollars in use, all right, we're gonna do, uh, I don't think we have any minutes to approve, and that's gonna bring us to board member reports, why don't we start with Mr. Mike Krappman?
Um, I don't have a lot, uh, we, uh, just, uh, had our meeting a couple weeks ago with the Lowell Regional Transit Board, uh, we talked about a number of things while we were there, some concerns that we have in Tuxbury, uh, we've had the board committees come in front of us and tell us some of their priorities as they come in, we had the library come in and tell us their priorities, we had this council and aging tell us their priorities, well, we took those into consideration, um, when council and aging came in, they were looking for an additional van, so I brought that up to the board and we may just be having, getting them a third van, we're working through the numbers, it's not finalized, but we, it looks like we may be able to get them a third van for their services, what they need. The other thing that was brought up was the library, they were talking about, um, they would love to have a bus route out front, in, in front of the place, so we are going to take a look at that, we're gonna see if we can have, um, some people from the town, have the town manager, some other people involved, take a look at where the bus routes currently go, who would be impacted by maybe changing some of these things, and maybe, um, extend the route of coming out, instead of coming out of East Street, maybe coming out of Chandler and coming down the rest of the length of 38, so this way it would go around, come out, stop at the council and aging, also stop at the library, where I know a lot of people that use that route wouldn't mind using that, I know there's a lot of kids that go to the library, um, so they could hop on the buses and get back and forth at the end of the day, um, so it'd be a good use, so we'll look, putting those into consideration. Um, economic development, we met, um, a quick meeting, um, at the beginning of the month, uh, we have a brand-new guide up there, I want to thank the town manager and the assistant town manager for working very hard with us to get those things done, uh, but we have a new updated Doing Business in Tuxbury, it's 2019, which is very important, because the one we had prior to that was probably, I don't know, five, six, it was prior to the, it was prior to the high school opening, because it said we're in the process of building a high school on the old guide, so it's, I'm very happy that it's updated, it shows , uh, the improvements that we've made, um, it, we're, we're trying to attract new businesses, we're trying to work on the website, we're trying to talk about, you know, do some work about how we can help the current businesses that are here, and also try to draw some additional business coming in, so it's, we're doing some really good work, and I'm proud of the committee, um, and that's pretty much all I have for tonight, thank you.
Ms. Jane Miller?
Um, I, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I attended the NIMCOG meeting on July 17th, um, and there was more talk about the census, everybody's trying to get the word out about the census, um, and the potential for redistricting, when that redistricting happens following the census, I think it's gonna be April 2021, so we'll find out if we get redistricted and do another congressional district or not, since we're on the edge, we used to be one, now we're there, um, and then it looks like there may be a new bottle bill coming forward, so there was, um, we passed a resolution that had been initiated by the Conservation Law Foundation, um, asking regional planning agencies to endorse, and, um, it calls, among other things, for, to shift some costs for municipalities and have producers, incentivize producers to, um, design products and make them easier to recycle or reuse, so that's on the producer side, this is some state legislation that this sort of endorses, and then the other, um, item that we may see in the future is expanding the bottle bill to include, um, bottled water, sports drinks, teas, wine spirits bottles, and nips as well, and anybody who's been cleaning up the side of the road in, in Tuxbury is aware that we pick up a lot of those bottles. Um, there was an ask on the part of the Conservation Law, uh, Foundation to increase the deposit fee to 10 cents, but we rejected that at NIMCOG, um, so I don't know how that's gonna come forward in terms of the bottom of, we were all like, no, thank you very much, um, so I just wanted to share that with the board, so, um, and, uh, it was a pleasure to serve with some of our, um, esteemed colleagues in the police department on the, um, national night out, and, um, uh, make a lot of hot dogs, there were just so many hot dogs that, um, Mr. Krappman and Mr. Kelly made, just, just so many, um, so you did an admirable job, gentlemen, um, and then, Mr. Krappman, I had a question for you, just for the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, is there any conversation that's happening about, um, commuter transportation into Boston at the, at the LRT, are they having any kind of conversation like that at all?
Yeah, the only thing that we have, I mean, we have the buses that go to Wilmington Station-
Right.
From there, you can get to there.
Sure.
I mean, everything that we do is, pretty much brings you to our things, and then you can go, I mean, you can go to the Lowell, and you can go to anywhere from there, if you go to the, the main bands, talk about, we try to educate people about how you can get to any, almost any place around, I mean, you can go to the malls up in Tinsborough, you can go from here, but you can't get the straight shot, but you can go and take shuttles to different places, but that's the only educational part that we do, we're not promoting any other, like, private industry or somebody else to be doing something like that, we're just doing our own thing at this time.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Bryant Dick?
Um, just a couple things, thanks Melissa for always taking our minutes.
The only thing I have is the elementary building, uh, the elementary, um, the subfield
committee, that's the only committee that I'm on right now, and, um, we're trying to fill Mr. Francis's spot, so I'd like to thank Mr. Francis for his leadership guidance, all his participation, um, he brought a lot to the committee, so he'll be, uh, dearly missed, but, uh, so moving forward, we have six active members, we need a seventh, and that representation will come out of the elementary building committee, so working with the chair, Mrs. Astronik, and, um, the committee to fill that spot, that's about it.
All right, perfect, I'll just close, uh, we did establish a reuse committee, speaking of the elementary school building committee, we did establish a reuse committee for the North and Trey Hand, we're gonna get that committee fired up right after Labor Day, so as we all know, um, it's the dark days of summer, and a lot of folks are on vacation, so, um, just to the committee members and to the residents, it's still near and dear, very important committee, um, because we have some big, big decisions coming down the pipe, but we are going to kick that committee off, um, the first week of September, so those on the committee, stay tuned for an email, and for the residents, um, I just wanted to update the residents accordingly, because again, that's been a ask out there. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Ms. Astronik?
You didn't do my board reports.
Oh, Ms. Astronik, I'm sorry. Two hours of running, I try to keep it under, after two hours, I get a little bit-
I'm gonna be quick.
I second, I second, no, no.
No worries. I was quick on that.
You were good.
Um, so, I, just, the events committee is getting ready, September 29th, I just want to thank the town manager, because they're going down to the field this week, to, as you know, we're thinking about doing some road closure down there for the event, so, um, we're hoping that that works out, so just want to make sure that, um, you guys talked about the elementary building committee, we have reorged, I am the chair, Jamie Cutlass is the vice chair, Shannon Demos was appointed as the, um, school committee representative, she was on the board prior, on the committee prior, and then, because of the election. I also just need to send a big shout-out to Dennis Francis, um, the, um, as far as I know, um, I've been working with Dennis for about, mm, 15, 18 years advocating in this community, and I just want to thank him for all the services that he has done for this town, and all the work that he's put in, in the countless hours, and to his family for allowing, um, them to share him with us, so I want to say that. And then my last comment is that school starts on August 28th, so I just want to remind people to be mindful, um, kids are gonna be on bus stops, and they're going to be excited, and it's a new school year, so it's very exciting, that's it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna say no, I'm gonna say no, but I apologize for making a motion to adjourn, so now, except there's your motion, I have a motion, I have a second, alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, good job, thank you, guys.